Good evening, everyone. So I'm councillor Cash Nae, Chair of the Licenses Subcommittee, which has been convened to consider an application for a new premises licence for Portfield Local in Newport Pagnell. Please note that this meeting will be recorded for broadcast on the internet after the meeting has taken place and reviewed online on council's YouTube. Generally, the public gallery is not filmed, but by entering the meeting room and using the public seating area, you are consenting to being filmed. The recording of this meeting will be retained for a period of six months for the purpose of webcasting and preparing the minutes of a meeting. So before we begin, I will ask Subcommittee members to introduce themselves. When I call you, please give your name and role on the Subcommittee. And if you have any declarations of interest, please take the opportunity to declare them now. Councillor McLean.
Good evening, councillor Keith McLean, a member of the Subcommittee this evening and Vice Chair of the Main Committee.
Councillor Trendall.
Good evening, councillor Paul Trendall. I'm a member of the committee and a Vice Chair of it. Thank you.
Right, I'll now go through the officers and ask them to introduce themselves. James.
Thanks councillor. My name is James Sloan. I'm the Principal Licensing Officer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ophelia Shirinodra. I'm a Principal Lawyer on behalf of the Daggones Council.
Jane.
Good evening, Jane Crichton, Democratic Services Officer.
I'll now ask the other parties online to introduce themselves. Mr Sresh.
Yeah, thank you. This is Sresh Kanabadi. I will be the one talking on behalf of the applicant. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bibbin Jacob. I'm the applicant.
Alright, thank you very much. So I understand we also have objectives in relation to the application. I'll ask you to introduce yourselves at the relevant time. So I've already dealt with matters one and three of the agenda. So we'll move to item two, which is apologies for absence. So I assume since there are three of us, there are no apologies. Can you confirm, Jane?
No apologies received, Chair.
Thank you very much. So then we move on to item four, which is a licencing Subcommittee procedure. So I will outline the procedure that will be followed during the meeting. Can I however ask that the applicant and other parties bear in mind the guidance that has been provided to them in advance of the meeting, and of which there are copies provided tonight. Firstly, the Principal Licensing Officer for the council present the relevant details but make no recommendations regarding the decision on the application to the Subcommittee, together with information regarding any details relevant to the application which may have come to light since the report was written. The applicant's representative can present their case, including calling any witnesses. Questions will then be put to the applicant through and with the consent of the Chair by the other parties and the Subcommittee. Next, the other parties will present their case but only where representations are unresolved. Responsible authorities will present their case before interested parties. Questions may then be put to those persons and with the consent of the Chair, by the parties and the Subcommittee. And just a reminder for everyone in the room that all the members of the Subcommittee have read the papers and submissions. So you don't need to repeat everything that you have submitted in writing previously. And any questions made are to clarify points made and not an opportunity to cross-examine or rebut statements made by other parties. So after this, I'll invite the summing up, replicating the order of speaking for which cases were presented. And the members of the Subcommittees will then adjourn to deliberate and come to a decision. Only the legal advisor and clerk who remain with the Subcommittee will be informed orally of the decision of the Subcommittee along with any conditions and reasons for these conditions. And then a written decision notice will be sent to the applicant as soon as possible. So we'll move on to item five, the application for a new premises licence, Portfield Local, Newport Pagnell. So I'll invite the Principal Licensing Officer to start. So go ahead, James.
Thanks councillor Nae. Good evening, everybody. And so tonight, members, you're looking at a new premise licence application. This is for Portfield Local, which is a convenience store in Newport Pagnell, which is just off the High Street, but you can see on the map exactly where it is. And the application as applied for would permit the off sale of alcohol between 6am in the morning and 11pm at night, and that'd be seven days a week. And members will note that there are a lot of conditions that have been offered by the applicant. And these are detailed on page twenty-one of the papers. And then just today, the applicant has agreed the conditions requested by the licensing officer, who was acting as a responsible authority. And so the conditions that are on page thirty-one included in the representation have now been agreed as well. And representations have been received by seven other persons. And members will know that other persons basically means a local resident or business, something along those lines. And there was a typo in the, a couple of typos in the report suggesting there were six or eight other persons, but there are, there are seven representations outstanding. These representations are detailed on page thirty-seven to forty-seven. Concerns raised includes the concern that customers might be drinking outside the front of the shop or behind the shop. There's concern about noise from customers that might arrive in their cars and slam doors etcetera late at night. The street's been described as quite quiet, so perhaps if there are these concerns, it might be more relevant in a quieter street rather than a high street. And there's concern about just the general late opening hours, the loitering of customers, and then also potentially foreign deliveries. And members will have noted that a number of the representations have suggested how the matters might be resolved. And essentially that boils down to a reduction of hours. And it's been suggested sale of alcohol between 8am and 6pm and for their not, for the premises not to be open on Sundays. I don't believe the applicant has made a response directly to the objectors and certainly not to the licensing authority. But it would be worth asking the applicant and his agent as to whether they would consider those changes. I think it's fair to say that locality is very much residential. As I say, it's off the main High Street. And you do have to drive down a couple of roads. There are two other businesses in that small parade of shops. Everywhere else, there's lots of bungalows. And although I don't have detailed information as to who might live in the immediate vicinity, representations do mention that there's a lot of retirees and young people that live in the area, but I can't confirm one way or the other in respect of that. And so really, that's the end of my report. Thank you, members.
Alright, thank you very much, James. So firstly, are there any questions from the other parties?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. So now do we have questions from the Subcommittee? Yeah, go ahead, councillor Trendall.
Yeah, so it says question about how we apply licensing law. So we've got residential street here as opposed to High Street. In terms of things like noise, are we allowed to apply a different standard for a residential street in terms of how loud is loud and how loud is too loud than we would on the High Street? Or do we have to, a bit like in planning, do we have to apply the same rule to everywhere and you apply the same standard to everywhere?
In applying the standard, you have to take into account the location of the premises. So yes, you can take into account that it's a residential street as different to on a High Street.
Yep, councillor McLean.
Thank you. A couple of questions. In the report, section four point two, it says the applied for hours broadly in line with nearby shops offering similar trading times in terms of limited hours, sale of alcohol. That would be nearby similar shops in the sense that convenience stores rather than the two either side of the premise that we're, we've been asked to consider the application for. Is that correct?
And for you, Chair, the two businesses next door, I think it's a martial arts or fitness studio and a beauticians. And I don't know their opening hours. They're obviously, they're not licensed premises. I will have a quick Google to have a look. But in respect of section four point two, we're talking about a couple of shops in the nearish locality. So about five hundred metres away on the, on the High Street, there's RPM stores. And that opens 8am to 11pm with reduced opening hours on Sunday. There's a lot of off-licensed premises in, on the actual High Street in Newport Pagnell. And to take an example, the co-op there at number seventy-seven opens also from eight o'clock until eleven o'clock at night. And slightly reduced hours on Sundays as well. And I think that's broadly reflective going up the High Street in Newport Pagnell.
Okay, I think there's one near Ouzdale School, but it's not, it's not on the High Street. And I can't remember the name of the street. I can look it up. The other question I have is, in the papers, there's some expressions of concern about early morning deliveries. Much as we might be able to condition delivery of licensed items, we presumably could consider putting a condition onto licence, a condition for the delivery of, say, newspapers or milk.
And for you, Chair, councillor McLean, exactly right. It'd be very difficult to condition something about deliveries because we don't know whether those deliveries will be newspapers, pints of milk, or there'll be cans of beer. So I don't think we would, I think it'd be very difficult for you to condition that sales of alcohol can, sorry, delivery of alcohol can only be made after 8pm. I think that might be too difficult to touch.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to number two, which is the applicant's representative. So I'll invite applicant's representative to present their case. So Mr Sresh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just to quickly say that the applicant here today, he, he's been operating license premises in residential area as well in other places. So he has a well experienced person over ten years now. And he knows the four licensing objectives and in terms of prevention of climate disorder, public safety and prevention of public nuisance and production of children from harm. And then also part of the application, we have put forward robust conditions as the officer mentions to address the four licensing objectives. So just quickly go into the hours. The store is going to be opening hours between six and eleven pm. So we are not looking at the opening hours. We are looking at whether the store can be now licensed between six and eleven pm concerning the objections. And so not right now, the, I would like to, there are no responsible authorities put any, on your objections here. And the residents have concern about people drinking on this, in the front and at the back. But nothing has been evidenced. They haven't made any complaints. But in any case, the store coming, because the store is, you know, they can't be responsible for what's been happening. But what can, what they can be responsible is what's anything that possibly happens. So if those things possibly happen, the store can really manage that. They wouldn't be selling to anyone drinking on that street or anyone drinking at the back or in the front. And also we have CCTV system in place. Anything that likely to happens that can be evidenced through the store CCTV system. So the police have the, the opportunity to handle that matter if that is something that in the future happening. So now coming back to people loitering and things like that as well. And then I think the concern is the deliveries. And also, I mean, we do understand even in the, you know, the application, the applicant totally understands is the residential area. But it is about how we're going to manage, how we're going to promote the four licensing objectives. So one that we are looking at here in particularly the prevention of public nuisance objectives. I think we, that can be conditions because I think the store will be doing that already, but we are happy to have that as a conditions. I think one of the members said that, you know, it can be managed, you know, no deliveries coming to the premises other than newspapers shall take place between twenty hundred to morning eight hundred hours. So not, no deliveries to the premises other than newspapers shall take place between twenty hundred, like 8pm in the evening to eight, eight am in the morning. And also, we have to have another condition, like to address that as well, the public nuisance. No waste or recyclable material, including bottles, shall be moved or removed from or placed in outside areas between twenty hundred to eight hundred hours on the following day. So that's the condition number two. And condition number three we would like to offer, management will ensure that all customers move away from the premises after leaving the property and do not loiter in the area. So we will, as a, as a step that we will take, the management. And also notices, we go, another condition number four, we will have notices shall be prominently displayed at all exit, requesting customers to respect the need of the local residents and businesses and leave the area quietly. I think those four conditions would address the, the concerns that raised by the residents. But, you know, we all know that there are High Street nearby, there are other shops nearby also opening until twenty-three hundred hours. Now, in a High Street, you know, any, any other premises could apply beyond eleven hundred hours, twenty-three hundred hours. But here we are, we consider the residential area. I think we applied until twenty-three hundred hours at the maximum. And to, to promote the, to prevent the public nuisance, we have number of conditions we offered now, four conditions on the licence. So I think the residents probably concern or have a fear about something going to happen. But it is about promoting the licensing objectives. It's all about how we're going to manage the premises. And it is totally possible to manage. Obviously, the local, most of the customers is going to be local residents. And they will be working together with them. After a while, they will come to know all the residents nearby. And it is, you know, they can work closely with them to manage the premises as well. I mean, they could raise any concerns because it will be, that the store is for the community. And so I think the applicant is really good at, you know, working with the local community as well. Yep, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now do we have any questions from the other parties? So any of your objectives? Okay, yep.
Now come up.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're going to ask each of you to come up. If you have a question, introduce yourself and talk into the mic so it can be picked up for the recording. Yep, if you guys would like to move closer, then feel free.
So. So Chair, I think, were you saying something to us, which I wasn't sure?
No, no, no. So we've just got a few questions coming from some of the objectives. They're just.
Oh, objectives, okay, yeah, that's right.
And just a reminder for the objectives, you can only ask questions about what has been said so far. So just try, basically don't stray off topic too much. So go ahead. Yep, so if you want to turn on your mic by pressing the button on the right.
So I think we're in licensing hours.
I'm sorry, can you just introduce yourself? Sorry.
Sorry, this is Wendy Johnson. I live at number thirty-five, which is right. I'll be the one that's over the archway that's apparently going to be covered by CTDB. CTDB isn't in place yet. He's asked me to contact my letting agents to get them to contact the landlord, so it hasn't been put in place yet. And the other objective would be the fact that we understand about the licensing laws. However, each time has been a shop there, I've had, and I can say, it's not potential for.
Yes, sorry, Miss Johnson. You'll have a chance to talk later. This is purely questions to ask the applicant or representative now.
Yeah, basically, is, is, will we be reducing, be reducing the opening hours because it just does not make sense. I'm going to be listening to shutter doors at 6am and eleven thirty pm every day.
Okay, so the question was about reducing opening hours. Okay, so feel free to respond. Yep, the applicant or representative.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you for that question. Right now, the store can be opened between six and eleven pm. And so the question of whether we're going to have licensing hours, I think we would like to have the licensing hours at the same times. And the concerns that raised by you, that's one of the reasons we address the number of conditions. So we are sticking to the hours as applied for the licensing as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And any other questions? And please introduce yourselves as well. Thank you.
Yeah, the microphone will move.
I find that we're getting no sort of time for ourselves. Oh, sorry. I'm Terence Lampard and I live next door, on the other side of the alley, to where the shop's going to be. And the shops, previous shops have been not too much bother, except that we did have trouble with the, the other food shop, food and wine shop that went in there for a little while because they wanted extended hours and it got reduced. They reduced their hours. And, but they still delivered stuff really early.
So, so Miss Lampard, sorry to.
They were moving the racks across.
So the section after this, you'll have a whole, you'll have a whole chance to make your case. This is purely just for questions. So do you have a question that you'd like to raise?
They were told they couldn't deliver that early, but they did. And so, and we had to go out and have a row. Well, only, I haven't got any questions because I know what you want. I want what I, what we want.
Shortly, when we, the applicant, the Chair will ask any objectives to address the Subcommittee and then you can have.
Yeah, I mean, we, we reject the proposed hours of six to eleven and we'd like to reduce.
Okay, so, so I don't think there have been any questions yet. So. Okay, that's all right. So let me just move on to, does the Subcommittee, are there any other objectives you have any questions that we'd like to ask? Sorry, and I'm just, I'll let James come in now. Go ahead, James.
And if it's convenient, Chair, you have the, so through you, Chair. So I think I gathered the four conditions are that there wouldn't be any deliveries between eight in the evening and eight in the morning. There'd be no waste removal between the evening and eight in the morning.
Yeah.
This is, there'll be a condition that you'll have notices in the shop to ask people to leave quietly.
Yeah.
And the condition where I'm struggling is I think you said that the licence holder would move people on who are standing outside. And that sounds very easy, but I think that might be difficult. And so I'd like the applicant or the agent, Chair, just to be able to describe what actions will actually be taken. How will the licence holder manage moving people on from outside the front and I guess the rear of the shop? Thank you, Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you for that question. I think that's one of the reasons we have a sign. I mean, this, two conditions just go in line with it, actually. We have a sign to say the customers leave the premises quietly. And we could point out the sign to the customers. If they hang around outside, please leave the area because not to congregate and not loitering. And it is manageable, you know, it is how we, it's all about how we communicate, how we talk to those people. I think concerning that area, it's been mentioned mostly elderly people living there as well. I think we don't consider, you know, it's something that will happen. But I think we are addressing the concerns through a condition. And it's just totally manageable to ask people to leave the premises, leave the area outside if they're hanging around. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. So do we have, yep, go ahead, James.
Sorry, Chair, and just to lay the point ever so slightly really, just through experience, it will be difficult, I believe, for the licence holder to move people on because they don't really have the powers to do so. And so I think really, members, you might want to look at if we're going to accept a condition such as this. Just to add perhaps a bit more detail as to whether the licence holder would take some form of register to record when they've asked people to move on. And ultimately, if they don't move on, the licence holder needs to not sell them any alcohol anymore and just refuse to have them as customers because they won't be able to tell them really to shift it. They'll have to take other action. And that's really the end of my point on that one.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Yeah, any other questions from the objectives? Sorry, Miss Lampard, please turn on your mic, just so it can be picked up for the recording. I know you get used to it, I promise.
Sorry. Are you going to have bins outside for the rubbish and everything?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. So we have ordered a bin from the council, so it's going to come, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there will be a bin outside. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, final opportunity. Any other questions from, or just of this section? Alright, so do we have any questions from any members of the Subcommittee?
Actually, quite a good to hear because there's a lot of reverberation on the sounds. So the four, am I correct in thinking you're not offering to reduce the hours of the licence that you've applied for?
Yeah, that's correct. The, because the opening hours is going to be remained the same. I think we want to have the licensing hours same as well. Thank you.
Councillor Trendall, any questions?
Yeah, just on, so, so tell me, so you, you're thinking of opening at six correctly? That's correct, isn't it?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, we want to have tea, coffee and milk and things like that as well in the early morning.
Yeah. How much booze do you think you're going to sell at six in the morning?
Well.
You want to, you want to license sell alcohol from six in the morning? That's what the application's for. How much booze do you think you're going to sell at six in the morning and to whom?
Well, the question here is definitely, you know, people are not going to buy early in the morning.
No.
Yeah, of course. I mean, then the question will be here whether, you know, whether there's any concerns about, you know, I mean, the police or any other authority haven't raised any concerns about people drinking outside on the street in the morning because it's a residential area. I think if people are doing it, it's going to be quite visible. I think the resident would tolerate that as well. They will do something about that. But now the question is why we can't have the licensing and the opening hours same? I think there is no concern that, you know, in this area, people are going to buy in the morning and drink outside. So, so there's no reason to have the licensing hours in the morning. That's our arguments. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me what the police aren't concerned with, but we're concerned. So we get to ask. That's the way it works. That's clear.
Oh, no, of course, of course, of course. I got it. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Alright, so we're now going to move on to the other interested parties. So this is where the objectives now have a chance to make their relevant representations. So you're welcome to briefly address the Subcommittee and to introduce yourselves before you speak. So we can start off yourself, Miss Johnson.
Okay, well, I'm in charge.
Yeah, you can bring them, either sit forward or bring the microphone towards you, please.
My apologies. Do that. I'll do both. So yeah, I have lived in that area for about seven years now with my daughter. She is mildly autistic. She has issues with being kept up at night with noises. Early mornings for myself, I have to run two jobs based, based on the fact that, you know, my, my personal circumstances. I need rest. I mean, everybody needs rest. I work probably until about ten pm. So I really don't want to be hearing shutters at eleven, eleven thirty, whenever they close off, cars leaving at eleven thirty because they're not going to close at eleven thirty. They're not going to close at eleven. There's still the winding down. They've got to do the tills, do the lights, making sure all the doors are locked and everything, all the shutters are down. So it's going to be more along the lines of eleven fifteen, eleven thirty. And that's every single night. And six am on a Sunday, it's, it's, I can name the four people and two of their dogs that walk the street on a six am on a Sunday. And that's literally all. Oh, and the one lad that goes to karate. And that's what you're going to get. That's the trade you're going to get. A boy for sweets and a couple of old beers that wake up at eight for their milk on a Sunday. So I don't really see the economic benefits of opening it that early on a Sunday, certainly not seven days a week. Certainly not for our street. Not when you have Strawberry Local, you've got the one by Annesley Road is the one you were thinking of, opposite Ouzdale. We have the little Newport News on the corner of Woolton Road. Then you have the other Newport News on the way in, two co-ops and one premier. Not including Two Shell Local Garage and a BP Garage that anyone, anyone could go to. So I really don't see the purpose of opening that many hours on a Sunday. And my bin, thank you for bringing up the bins. My, my point was the bins as well. And it's, it's bad enough that they're walking past my rented flat. All of the detritus that they're doing for their construction work, which I understand needs to happen. However, they've got no recourse to actually cross my threshold. I have my letting agents. I have my letting agents and landlords on my case pretty much every six months to keep my property clean. And to start work at eight A M this Sunday just gone, which I believe is actually illegal to do, isn't it, working on, on a premises in a residential street at eight A M on a Sunday, unless they have a licence to do so?
Check of all legal. Yeah, it sounded would have clarified purely to assist the licence committee.
I'm happy to support local shops, but, you know, reduction of hours would be my insistence. Oh, and they didn't have C C T V installed, there's one old C C T V unit, but they've asked me to actually approach my letting agents to approach the landlord to get that looked into. Which I believe is not my responsibility, they can quite easily look, look at any property and state who's actually the ownership of that property.
Okay, thank you very much, uh yeah. Uh Mister Lampard, would you like to go ahead?
Well, you brought up most of my objections anyway, when you read them out. Um, the, and the other thing I thought about was um parking spaces in the area. I mean, there's the very few parking spaces outside the shop. And uh, you know, people might be wanting to park across, across people's driveways and things like that. If they're, if they are gonna get a lot of people go there, but I'm not so sure about. Yeah, yeah, uh yeah, the other thing was, um previous shop also, no, food and wine shop, had lights that were shining across the road and were keeping people away all, because they were on all night, and they had to turn those off in the end. Um so hopefully there won't be any bright lights, and all the bun, bungalows have um the bedrooms at the front, so that noise would um affect those. I mean, we're all mainly all pensioners, not you included.
Yeah, I think just a reminder that any objections have to be part of the four licenciable objectives. Uh so I think some of those concerns might potentially be planning, unless I stand corrected. But, I, I'm sorry, let it be you, James, but.
Yeah, that's right, the future, um so I think it, it would be a matter for the committee to decide whether you feel those are licensing objectives. The parking element generally is more of a planning issue, Chair, can I just ask that the microphone is
Yeah, sorry, Miss Lampard, do you mind just turning off your mic for a second? Right, thank you.
Cheers, thank you, Chair, um so parking generally would be more of a planning issue, unless there is evidence to show that the parking issue is currently a problem. Um and I, I don't know if there's enough weight of evidence there, but you'd have to consider what the local residents are saying. Um in respect of lighting, it could be a public nuisance, I know the environmental health haven't made an objection against this. But I think it's perfectly reasonable, if previously there has been a problem, and, and we don't know the details of what sort of lighting was being used, but it might be that the applicant can um can have some sort of undertaking to ensure that their lights do not shine directly across the street. Obviously, there would be a need to illuminate uh the pavement and the entrance just in front of the shop, but it doesn't take a lot to make sure the lights um are being considered, so I'm sure that's something the applicant might consider.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'm sorry, Miss Lampard, I did interrupt you, so do you want to just make any final remarks? Do you have any final remarks you'd like to, you'd like to make? I do. And just through your mic, really sorry, really sorry.
The people opposite have problems with, with lights, not, not myself. Or up there.
First, it, I mean, it's part of public nuisance, parking on people's verges, parking in front of people's driveways.
Yeah.
They've already had two people parking up where they, they used to call themselves Lemon Tree, it's something else, Beauty Balance now is number twenty nine. Who also has a head little hairdressing salon at the front as well, so you get three cars maybe for them.
All right, thank you very much. Uh okay, so we have one more object registered to speak, uh Lorraine, Lorraine? I think, uh representing Sheila Coast is, is she here and she would like to, no, okay, that's absolutely fine. Um okay, so I'm just gonna move on to questions now, so uh are there questions from any of the other parties? Uh so I'll, I'll start, I'll start with you, James, go ahead.
No, no, thank you, I think there's no questions. Oh, no, excuse me.
Yeah, that's fine, let me show through uh the principal licence officer, James first, and then we'll come to you guys on a call, so James, you go ahead first, thank you.
Thanks, Chair, I'm sorry if I'm putting my hand up at the wrong time, sorry if I'm confusing matters. Um just really a point to say that the, the need, I know Wendy had mentioned, and there's lots of other shops, but obviously as members will know, but this is for the benefit of local residents, need is not part of the licensing objectives, and that's not something that you can consider, I'm afraid. Um but one question really, and I think it's for uh Mister Lampard. In your representation, you do reference that there's this area behind the shops that has caused problems before. Um I, I've, I've driven there, so I know that area, I don't know how familiar the residents will be, uh sorry, the members will be about this, but maybe you might want to expand upon that and just give an example of the type of issues that you've experienced in respect of um like crime disorder or antisocial behaviour. Thank you, Chair.
If you'd like to have a brief response, Mister Lampard.
Well, we've, we've had um the police, a couple of police raids there um this year, isn't it?
Yes, sorry, if I can interject. One of the flats has been turned into three smaller flats, so you've got single occupant properties there, two of which are council owned, I think, or the um sort of emergency housing, so we get um families that have to be put into there, or couples or young people that have to be put in there really quickly. Uh and the last two or three people that we've had there have unfortunately caused um harassment, um a lot of nuisance, there's been abuse, there've been smashed bottles, there's been uh substance abuse, needles and uh nitrous oxide bottles, screwed, screwed about the place. Um so it's, it's been a bit of a interesting journey this year, I'd say, with the residents in the back there.
All right, no, thank you very much, uh if you'd like to turn off your mic, sorry, and uh sorry, James, back to you, was anything else, or was that it?
But, no, thank you, Chair, that's, that's seen my questions.
Okay, uh now, do people on a call, any questions from yourself?
Uh no, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, uh so now, any questions from the subcommittee? Uh go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, um there's been made reference, there has been previously a convenience store in that um location. Do you know, can you remember what the licensing hours were for that, and when did that close? Or, but James could probably answer that.
Yeah, go ahead, James.
Um yes, Chair, so there, there was a shop in this parade previously, but it was actually the next door shop, and so their opening hours I'm writing it down, hold on one second, please, um so I think initially it was eight, it was probably eight A M until eleven P M. Um but then, an application was put in to reduce those hours to eight A M to eight P M. And that might have been because a planning restriction, but that is the shop next door, and we've had no representation from planning in respect to this.
Thank you for that, and just to clarify what you said about the uh problems at the rear of the properties. My interpretation is that your, what's occurred is nothing to do with the shop, it was to do with the residents of the, sorry, I've just haven't finished yet, sir. Um it's to do with what, um so the people that were moved into the premises rather than to do with the occupants of the shop, so nothing for us to consider there.
Uh, Councilor, nope, all right, um okay, so now we move on to closing submissions. Uh so this is a base and opportunity for all parties to briefly sum up their case in the same order of speaking from earlier. And a reminder, there is no further opportunity for questions at this stage, so uh James, over to you.
Thanks very much, Chair, um so to summarize then, there hasn't been any um um there hasn't been any proposed change of hours by the applicant, the applicant has suggested five additional conditions. Um which was no deliveries between the hours eight P M, eight A M, no movement of waste, eight P M to eight A M, that they will move people on if they're loitering outside, and that there will be notices up in the shop to ask people to leave quietly, and that there would be a bin um placed outside, and I think that the bin condition was agreed. Um we hear that really the residents not hap, particularly happy with those hours, they've, they've referenced eight A M to six P M. Um we've had a bit of information about the types of issues that they've experienced previously. Um I, just if you are minded to change the hours uh to something different from their opening hours. Um just please be aware of the section ten point fifteen in the uh, in the guidance, because normally um an off-sales premises opening hours would match their alcohol hours, unless there are reasons for restricting those hours, and so if you do decide to do that, please have reference to section ten point fifteen and, and provide some reasons for doing that, um I think that's my summary, really, thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated, uh the applicant, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I think um, I think the officer said everything that we're going to say, but just briefly say that uh it is how we're gonna manage the premises, um and also the condiscents, I think one of the residents' concerns about whether we're gonna follow the condiscents or not, I think they were saying, various people breaching it, uh but the condiscents are not optional, they are like you know, the store has to follow it, uh any breach of it is um, is an offence, and also the authorities will be inspecting and um the residents can actually complain to their licensing authority as well. Um so, um so just want to point out that, thank you.
Thank you very much, and then finally we have the other parties, um so any more registered to speak and sum up, uh Mister Johnson, would you like to start?
Uh no, just um I don't think any of us are really happy with, with it being six to eleven every single day.
No.
Um certainly not with, with our own sort of enjoyment of the peace of the street, but I'm pretty sure that um should the business model work, then we'd support it, however, not looking forward to shutters at eleven thirty in the night. But yeah, if we can cover that, that area with C C T V, that would be one thing, but I believe it's up to the applicant to actually um follow up with landlords and letting agencies, not the residents themselves. Um in a nutshell, um we'll just suck it and see how it's based.
Yep, thank you very much, uh Miss Lampard, from yourself, or?
Well, we're not happy, but there's nothing much we can do at the moment, is there?
Is it, and is that you summed up?
Something up that we're not happy.
We really want the Sunday hours reduced, because they have seven holidays of, of six to eleven, certainly living right next to it, it's
All right, so, thank you very much, everyone, um okay, so uh we now move into deliberations. So myself, my two colleagues, our legal advisor and clerk, will now adjourn to deliberate everything that's been discussed tonight. Sorry for running a bit over, um so as a subcommittee, we have gone through all the residents' concerns, the um representations made. Uh we have decided to grant the applicant uh their full licence, however, subject to the additional conditions that the ca, uh the applicant has offered, so that is uh um no deliveries, eight P M to eight A M. Uh all customers being moved away, uh James's additional recommendation of having a register, um having a bin placed outside, all of these will be provided in writing after, and also a reminder that the licence won't be granted until the other conditions have been met, uh for example, the C C T V being installed. Um and I think that's everything, and just for the residents, um if there are any future concerns, E G if there are any issues, you have every right to appeal, and we can always come back and revisit this decision. Um so with that, it is seven oh five, and I will close the meeting, thank you very much.